Good evening. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on June tenth, twenty twenty five to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, Seventy-Eighth and Sixth Street, New Brunswick. Call Command Secretary?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell. Ms. Jackwes.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
Ms. Sevilla.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Adornam.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for the flag suit, Dr. Johnson? Thank you. Reminder, the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, at seven PM, and in Brother High School in the auditorium. Item number three, the minutes for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. The motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Call Command Secretary?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ms. Jackwes.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Adornam.
Recuse motion.
Recuse noted, motion approved.
Thank you. Item number four, Superintendent for the Board, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. As of September twenty twenty five, we have enrolled eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six students. I am pleased to share that we have had an outstanding start to the school year. The smooth opening of our school reflects the dedication, planning, and teamwork of our entire district staff. As we move forward, guided by this year's theme of belonging, we will continue creating safe, inclusive, and engaging environments where both students and staff feel welcome, valued, and connected. Together, we ensure that everyone in our schools not only thrives in their learning and work, but also know that they are a central part of our school community. Our back-to-school nights are underway, with several more scheduled through September. These events give families a chance to meet teachers, learn about classroom expectations and curriculum, and discover ways to support their child's success. I encourage all our parents and guardians to attend, as your involvement is vital to strengthening the partnership between home and school. Together, we can create a strong sense of belonging as well, and lay the foundation for a successful year ahead. This September and October, we proudly celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, which really runs from September fifteenth through October fifteenth. We are reaffirming our district's commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and equity. Celebrating Hispanic culture means honoring the rich traditions and history of the Hispanic community. We invite everyone to join us by attending school and community events, and exploring the vibrant history that reflects this important contribution. And lastly, I'd like to recognize an award that we just recently received. The Sandy Hook Promise Club celebrates the creativity and dedication of the young people nationwide who are building safe and inclusive schools. Out of more than five thousand Save Promise Clubs across forty-nine states, one hundred and two were recognized this year. And we are proud that Paul Voltsen Community School for the Arts is one of them. Paul Voltsen's Save Promise Club has led initiatives like Start With Hello Week to reduce social isolation, Say Something Week to empower students to speak up when they see warning signs, and the Panthers Pals Program to build connections and promote acceptance in our classrooms. We're incredibly proud of our students' leadership and commitment to making Paul Voltsen a place where kindness, safety, and inclusion thrive. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. May I have a motion to approve this Superintendent's report?
Second.
Call Command Secretary?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ms. Jackwes.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Adornam.
Yes. Motion approved. Thank you. Before we get to item five, I would like to introduce Oscar Garcia. It's my pleasure to introduce our new student board of education representative, a proud senior here at New Brother High School. Oscar has been a member of the Brother Public School community since preschool, and has distinguished himself as a dedicated scholar and leader. He's a member of the National Honor Society, and has earned honor over every marking period during his high school career. Oscar. Oscar also serves on the New Brunswick Athletic Committee, and is the host of the Zebra Morning Show and Podcast, where he helps keep his peers informed and engaged. In addition to his academic and leadership roles, Oscar is also a three-sport athlete, participating in cross-country wrestling and track and field. He is also passionate about community service. For the past two years, he has participated in the Special Olympics five K torch run, and has helped raise over five thousand dollars for this important cause in partnership with the New Brother Police Department. So it's my absolute pleasure to welcome Oscar to our panel and to Board of Education. And Oscar, please remember that you are the most important voice on the panel. With that, we go to item five, the Student Representative Report.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Garcia Mesa, and I will be presenting the Student Representative Report. The two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year started off with a warm welcome from the Mayor's Office, the School Board, and the community dignitaries. Last week, everyone was excited to be welcomed back to school on the first Friday of the school year. All fall sports are up and running at the middle school and high school. We have football, boys' and girls' soccer, girls' tennis, girls' volleyball, cross-country, and cheerleading. Clubs are also starting to have meetings, such as class student council, marching band, color guard, et cetera. All classes met with their vice principals, counselors, support staff, and the principal. Activations were reviewed, as well as upcoming events during the school year. Back-to-school night is scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, from six to eight PM. Parents and guardians are encouraged to come to meet with their student teachers. Health and Sciences Technology High School. Back-to-school night for Health and Sciences Technology High School is also scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-fifth, from six to eight PM. HST ninth and tenth graders, students, will attend their first Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital presentation on September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Eleventh and twelfth graders have started their shadowing at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. P-Tech. P-Tech seniors started their fall classes at Middlesex. Most are taking English, comprehension, two and one engineering course. Our fifth and sixth-year students, along with our senior on the fourth-year track, have started the college application process. Many students have also started the process of internship for spring twenty twenty-six with organization, including the Associated Contractship Contractors of New Jersey, Jingle and CGI. DCO recently hired thirty-three of our former students for managerial positions at power plants in Delaware. The young people are doing so well that they have reached out asking for two to three additional students for summer enrollment. They'll see the the CARES program has sorry. The CARES program has thirty transfers from NBHS this fall. CARES credit recovery began today, nine sixteen. The Adult Learning Center Adult Program began Monday, nine twenty-two. This concludes the Student Representative Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Item number six, Facility Committee Report, Miss Ashley Call.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Facilities Committee meeting was held on Monday, September fifteenth, at four PM. We started our meeting with a close-out discussion related to our summer projects. This was followed by a presentation given by our Director of Technology and Innovation on our three-year technology plan, followed by a Q and A session. This concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number seven, Athletic Committee Report, Miss Ashley Call.
Good evening, everyone. The fall athletic season is underway and off to a strong start. At the high school level, programs include football, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, cheerleading, cross-country, girls' tennis, girls' volleyball, and esports. The middle school offers many of these same opportunities, with over one hundred and forty-five student athletes on the team rosters to begin competitions this week. At the high school, two hundred and sixty-six athletes are participating this fall, achieving a combined GPA of two point nine five. Overall, participation has increased by more than eleven percent compared to last fall, reflecting steady growth in student engagement. Boys' soccer has opened the season with a two-two record, and is competing against Monroe High School this evening. Football has expanded to fifty-seven athletes and continues to demonstrate steady progress each week. Girls' soccer has also seen significant growth, highlighted by the addition of a freshman team for the first time in many years. The Play Smart Program continues to support student athletes in maintaining eligibility, preparing for graduation, and pursuing college readiness. Beyond athletics, the program engages students in community service throughout the city and provides daily tutoring support to meet academic needs. The emphasis remains on the student and student athlete, prioritizing success in the classroom as well as on the field. Looking ahead, registration for winter sports, including basketball, wrestling, indoor track, bowling, and esports, will open in early October. And all athletic schedules are available at greatermiddlesexconference.org. May I have a motion to approve the Bank Reconciliation Report, please?
Call Command Secretary?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Ms. Jackwes.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Adornam.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number eight, Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Miss Jackwes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Policy Committee met on September ninth. The presentations we've had included the Green House elective, Green House Growth, where Ms. Sevilla is the science supervisor, and Katie DeBrosia, the physical health, the physical education and health and wellness supervisor presented the curriculum for the new elective course called Green House Growth for grades six and seven. At McKinley Community School, students will engage in the study of environmental science concepts, sustainability practices, and food production, making natural connections between science and health topics. Six, seven, to my daughter Sarah, they keep saying that, I don't know what that means. Kids keep saying six, seven, but it's six, seven. No full points, sorry. Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six district assessment schedule. Mrs. Hill reviewed the twenty-five, twenty-six district assessment schedule, organized by grade level and content area. The schedule includes reading level assessments, as well as NJSLS aligned common assessments in ELA in mathematics and science. The resolutions that we reviewed and recommended for approval are all on the consent agenda. The policies and regulations, we covered policy two-four-two-two statutory curricular requirements. It was a mandated policy that was revised. Policy Guide two-four-two-two has been revised to include the statutory curricular requirement, which mandates instruction on the history and contributions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in an appropriate place in the curriculum for students in grades K through twelve as part of the district's implementation of the NJSLS in social studies. In addition, the title of Policy Guide two-four-two-two has been revised to statutory curricular requirements, as many of the requirements listed in Policy Guide two-four-two-two are statutory requirements, and are referred to as statutory curricular requirements in the CUSAC DPRs. Some of these statutory curricular requirements are required to be incorporated into the NJSLS for comprehensive health and physical education. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Jackwes. Item number nine, Student Support Services, Miss Sevilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we begin this school year, we're excited to embrace Dr. Johnson's theme, I belong. The belonging is at the heart of a thriving school community. It means that every student, every family, and every staff member feels valued, seen, and supported. Throughout this year, we will carry this theme forward by creating spaces where students know that they are accepted, where they can feel a true sense of connection. September is also a time for awareness and reflection, as this month is also recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, reminding us of the importance of paying attention, offering compassion, and reaching out when someone may be struggling, and talking about that it's okay to look for help, right? We encourage our community to be aware, to speak up, and to remember that help is always available. The nine-eight-eight suicide crisis lifeline is a resource that can be reached at any time, day, or night. And we want to ensure our families and community that every school in our district has social workers, counselors, and psychologists who are ready, willing, and able to provide support whenever it's needed. We're committed to the well-being of our students, families, and together, we will continue to strengthen the spirit of belonging. September is also Cancer Awareness Month. This serves as an opportunity to come together in kindness and support, especially those who are fighting, healing, and remembering loved ones. Small acts of care and compassion mean so much during difficult times, and I've seen it firsthand. So finally, while there are specific months dedicated to special education awareness, we recognize the importance of honoring and supporting it year-round. And we're committed to spreading awareness, hosting events, and promoting activities throughout the year beginning this September. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Sevilla. Item number ten, we're going to open for public comments. Madam Secretary, do you have anyone else sign up to speak to me?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First on the list, we have Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Mr. Cradville, state your name and address.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want to start by welcoming the new student board member. Best wishes to you. And yeah, I guess a little history lesson. I need to correct something that I think we all were under the wrong impression. Apparently, from the eighteen-fifties until nineteen-ten, New Brunswick had an elected school board. So I vividly recall when Ms. Jackwes was first elected following an election in January twenty thirteen. We all thought it was the first time in history that the people got to elect school board members. But as a matter of fact, from the very beginning of public school in New Brunswick, all the way until nineteen-ten, there were annual school board elections. And there's actually twelve members of the board, one, or two for each of the six boards. So just in case I misspoke in the past, I wanted to correct that. I already shared this with Mr. Hendricks. But I apologize for missing the last meeting. I had something come up, and so I was not able to be there. But thank goodness for Carlos Ramirez, who was able to record the meeting. I was able to watch what I missed. And I want to start by saying I'm glad that you decided to finally change the name of the Woodrow Wilson School, and pleased that you had a somewhat public process for doing so. However, I noticed that you went into a closed session to discuss that matter. And I have with me the list of all the valid reasons for entering a closed session, and school renaming is not a legally valid reason for a closed session. Those deliberations should have been held in public. And I have concern that the law, specifically the Open Public Meetings Act, was not followed there. Moving on, last I heard, there's an impasse with the New Brunswick Education Association. It's apparent that the contract has expired. Now, the school year has begun, and they're working without a current contract. Can I ask, when was the last time this happened in New Brunswick?
I'm not sure. It must be, I've been around a lot of times, maybe ten, fifteen years, maybe longer than that. How many over two?
Definitely, I don't remember it. But yeah, I think it's definitely an important issue to address. I hope the board will speak on it tonight, and perhaps others. But I want to say I want to personally thank all the staff and faculty for their service, and wish everyone a happy, safe, and productive school year. And I think that the board can do a lot to improve the situation. I think we need more transparency about changes to district policies. For instance, somebody who saw the agenda tonight would have no idea what policies were going to be changed. You also should open up committee meetings to the public, allow remote access to this meeting via Zoom or phone, record and publish your meetings online, like so many other districts do, and remove the order required for people to sign up in advance to speak here, and just go back to the way it was before, where people could come up to the microphone and speak their piece. That's all for today.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. President, do you have anyone else?
Yes, we have Mr. Carlos Ramirez.
Mr. Ramirez, can you step up, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Carlos Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick today. I just wanted to start off with the dress code. I know I brought it up before. You guys have made sure to even make changes to the colors. However, students are not wearing uniform. They're wearing jeans, they're wearing other T-shirts, and other stuff. I think with the current scenarios going around across the country, I think it's important to set your foot down when it comes to that with the uniforms and the colors and the ADs being displayed at all times on the students' uniform. The other question I had was with the fire drills. How often is that performed?
I think fire drills are once a month or twice a month. The cook-off, once a month.
Have there been any block stairway scenarios?
Block stairway scenarios, what you said?
Yes.
I didn't note it on the list.
If it hasn't been done, I think it should be something that should be considered, just because when there is a fire, it could be just on that stairway itself, and people are very used, you know, taking that route. So I think that would be a safety tip to consider. Now, a couple meetings ago, we were talking about upgrading the security cameras for the districts. Has there been any updates on that?
I think it was reported in one of the facility meetings that we upgraded several of the cameras across the district.
So are we working on doing other schools? Are we complete on those things?
Every year, we select a number of schools for a security camera upgrade. So we implemented upgraded cameras in three of our buildings last year and three of our buildings this year.
Okay. Now, the other security concern I had was tonight, there's no students performing classes here. But usually when we come in, we go through metal detectors, our bags get checked, you know, bells, whatever melody might have to come off. I did not see that tonight. That's a big concern, just because I've been kicked out of school grounds for recording with a camera. And there's been a lot of meetings that I've attended through the past weeks, a few days back to school, where the security is not doing its job of securing the facility, or making sure that whoever's coming in doesn't have anything to harm others that are within school grounds. The only thing security is good at is giving access to people when they come in for official business, and ring the bell. It's almost like they don't want to receive the people, but if they're supposed to do it, they don't do it. So let's work on that.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have anyone else sign up?
That's everyone, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item number eleven, Presidency Report. First, I would like to welcome everyone back to another school year. It was a very busy start to the year this, a couple weeks ago. And there was a lot of energies, a little apprehension, maybe a few tears as the year began. But I hope the children and staff are adjusting well now that we're a few weeks into the school year. Just before we kicked off this new school year, we had a ceremony on the naming of the Robert J. Porter Elementary School. And I'd like to thank the community, the cabinet, and my colleagues on the board for the feedback and all the work that went into getting it done, and making that day a very special day. One moment that gave me goosebumps was hearing Mr. Porter's son Doug speak about his father's journey and how a teacher and coach helped mentor and assist him into college. And that coach was A. Chester Redshaw. That's pretty amazing, and it is a perfect example of what we say and what we mean when we say we want to create a hype for all leaders and learners. As Superintendent mentioned earlier, Hispanic Heritage Month began yesterday and continues until October fifteenth. I would like to acknowledge the contribution of our Hispanic I would like to acknowledge the contribution of our Hispanic and Latino community members, faculty, and staff. Please remember to be proud of your heritage, celebrate the culture, the languages, the traditions, and our history. That concludes my report. Item number twelve, Consent a Gentleman. I want a motion to approve the consent of gentleman. Call member secretary?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackless? Ms. Ortiz? Ms. Sevina? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, refuse A.S.
A.S., noted. Mr. Adorno?
Yes. Motion approved. Thank you. Item thirteen, Finance Committee Report, Ms. Varela.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met this evening and reviewed the September sixteen to the twenty-five finance report. Can I please have a motion to accept the finance report?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Alvarez? Thank you. Ms. Caldwell? Page eighteen, noted. Ms. Jackless? Ms. Ortiz? Ms. Sevina? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Mr. Adorno?
Yes, I refuse on page five.
Page five, noted. Motion approved.
Thank you. Item fourteen, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six, provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed sessions, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. One, personnel matters. Two, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed sessions by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and that the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reason for the non-disclosure in accordance, when the reason for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Meeting, uh, the Public Meetings Act no longer exists. May I have a motion proposed? Call member secretary?
Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Caldwell? Ms. Jackless? Ms. Ortiz? Ms. Sevina? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Mrs. Medina Hernandez? Mr. Adorno? We are in closed session.